Good to go.
Nice to see you. Nice to see you, Frau. Thank you. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Oh, okay. Little music outside.
Music.
This is dead.
Did it die?
Everything's dead.
Yeah.
We're all dead.
I don't know.
I mean, I mean.
How about now? The top was on. All right.
All right.
My apologies.
We'll start over. Oh, let's move down. Keith runs. All right, I'm gonna call this meeting orders to be a meeting of the Mayor and Council of City of Bisbee, Rock County, Cochise, State of Arizona, speaking on Tuesday, March fifth, twenty twenty-four, seven P. M. in our council chambers. Okay, well, let's do a quick roll call and.
All right.
With a little background.
All right, Councilmember Juanetta Hill is here. Councilmember Joni Giacamino. Councilmember Frank Davis. Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Mal Suiet is not here yet. Mayor Pro Tim Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff Stephen Pocken, city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Matthew Gurney, public works director, Tim Cox, police chief, Jim Richardson, fire chief, Joe Estes, city attorney.
All righty. We're gonna, um, hey, uh, for a moment of silence, hi, we'll just do a personal reflection, and then we'll say a pledge of allegiance if we can stand, and we'll go from there. Thank you. Thank you.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, in a few minutes tonight, I have a couple of, announcements and awards to give, and then an update on the city hall fire. So, first off, I'd like to start with an award for fifteen years. This is for Sergeant Carlos. Come on up. Fifteen years of loyal and dedicated service in the city of Bisbee. Wow, thank you, and.
Thank you, boss.
Give that to you.
And get a picture.
You can't want to get a picture.
I gotta get a post right now. I just got. Okay, are you ready? Well, it's tense, my brother. Play music, whatever you do. Sorry, I can't. Unlike, well, I can't find music.
Thank you, sir. It'll be a rough night. All right, um, for an update on city hall, just let everybody know we have been working diligently on it, and as of Friday afternoon, we got the final plan from our structural engineers. And.
So the main street project.
Main Street, so I said the hall. I mean, I'm in recovery mode still from, from a, a flu, but feel better with me. I'm gonna try to get through this tonight. So, yeah, so for this main street fire. So, what this, and I have air, and I'll release it to anybody that would like to see it. In fact, I think I might put it on. Anybody that contacts city hall can have a copy. It is a public copy. But he basically says, without reading the whole thing and making this drag on forever, that everything that was above the roof line, those two buildings, which is basically called a parapet wall, are damaged beyond salvageable at this point. So, he says both that part of the top part of the building has to come off. At that point, during this, this stabilization period, then there'll be six structural membranes put up on both sides of the front and back. And there will be jersey barriers placed on Main Street and in Commerce Street, and there'll be braces that will brace from those structural members attached to the brick back down to those jersey barriers. That will stabilize the front and rear. On the side that goes to thirty-eight over thirty-two main, there'll be, on every eight foot, there'll be another set of bracing that will be braced between the building and thirty-eight main. With a six by six, I believe, that will be attached to both sides. So, there's some work to be done. Uh, we are working with the contractor right now. A little tiny setback, I hate to say, the whole week, but it kinda is. We can't go in there and do anything until we get an asbestos report. Most of those take two weeks or more, but we made a whole bunch of calls Monday morning, and our inspector should be here either tomorrow or Thursday, guaranteed. Uh, we'll get him into a bucket truck, he'll take some samples and have us a report by Friday night or Saturday by noon. Things, the construction company can start to, as soon as they get all of their stuff set up and, and all the material together. I'll know more about that tomorrow or Thursday. Hopefully, they'll have us a closer bid and when the stand-up will come, unless you've heard anything else.
Nope, that's, that's the latest.
And so we're hoping for next week that construction can start. I will ask them, I'm not in control of it, but I'll ask them to try to do Main Street first. Once Main Street is done, then that means we can open one lane downhill. It'll be twelve foot wide, down slope. And then, you know, they'll work around the building however they can, but we're gonna try to ask to save as much of the brick as we can. I'm not sure exactly. They asked me, and I said, I'd rather you not just chuck it down on the street and break me into a million pieces. So, they're gonna try to do what they can do to save as much brick as possible, and then we'll try to put it on pallets, and we will, the city will store it in one of our lots someplace for future use of, if the owners decide. So, that's what we're hoping to do on that. And then, the next, I mean, really, what I, what we said is the timeframe is critical. This is what I told the president of the, of the construction company. And it is our, and, and I believe their intention to proceed with, with deliberate speed. So, we're gonna do it just as fast as, remember, these are forty-five hundred pounds, five thousand pound jersey bearers have to be brought in, all these big, long metal rods that are gonna support the building have to be brought in, plus a lot of timber. There's a lot of, a lot of lumber on this involved. One of which is big six by six beams that will go underneath the jersey bearers so that water can pass underneath them, and also span the ditch in the backside on Commerce Street. So, anyway, it's, and then it has, you have to be safe about what they're doing because everything is very loose up there and could, could have a fall at any time. So, that's where we are on that. And then, uh, I've asked them, and the fire chief has gone out and found some additional help, worked on the investigation. I don't know if you wanna say anything, but just AFT is fine, I'm ATF. They come in and investigate, but we're the ones that are gonna have to write the report, so I would like to have additional help on that. So, Chief, you contacted some people, and we're gonna have some, you're gonna have some backup or with you, partnership, I should say. Do you need Mary Constance?
Yes, um, contacted, there's a team here in Cochise County. I think the, the main person in that team is from Fire, Thrive Fire, Chief Billy Siemens. He's got a few guys that have agreed to come over and give us a hand as soon as the building is stabilized. That's in conjunction with the idea. So, we're gonna do a joint, uh, in-flying investigation after the building's stabilized.
Well, that's the next step. Good. We just feel that, you know, we need to establish absolutely as best we can the cause. And then, that'll be what we know a public record also. So, that's the steps. After that, then we basically turn the buildings back to the owners, and through their efforts or insurance or whatever, we'll work with them on trying to see what we can go do soon there. So, I don't wanna get too far ahead of ourselves. I just wanna do what we're doing. Go ahead.
Well, yeah, just a reminder to everybody that this, the, the area that's been cordoned off is no safer today than it was on, on February fifteenth, or excuse me, yeah, February fifteenth, the day after the fire. It is cordoned off for your safety. We, we have noticed that the parapet wall that fell into Main Street has started to dwindle in the, the number of souvenirs that it, it carries. Um, and it's still a very dangerous location. We really, really hate to have a casualty because somebody hopped over a barrier and wanted to get a brick for a souvenir and ended up getting, uh, get on the header someplace else with a brick that that falls off top of the building. And there's many, many loose bricks up there. So, please, for your own safety and, and for the safety of, of the general area, please stay away from that area. Hopefully, soon enough, we'll be able to open Main Street back up so that the district travel can get on the sidewalk and on the latest path. So, just a reminder.
Yes, safety is the utmost. Why we're taking as much time as we are, is it has to be done, done right, and then, and done safely, because we lucked out through the fire that no one was injured or, or hurt, and that was, that was a godsend, and so we don't wanna break that now. So, we either are, if either any of our public safety people were in the public in general, so. I again will, soon as I know more, and when we are going to see the construction people along the Main Street, I'll give a newer update and try to get it out there. We will. But I like to promise less and provide more. But right now, we were able to, to find a, a asbestos person within less than a week, and, and we do have the completed design, and I think it's, we're, we're moving on in deliberate speed as we can. So, all right, with that, the only public I have is for one of the, one of the items down the road. Uh, so, we'll spend with that and move forward now with general business. The first order of business will be a council panel.
I need the council panel in the amount of eight hundred ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and five dollars and seven cents, subject to availability of funds. Second.
No, motion to second. Questions on anything on the council panel? Zena? We have a motion to second to approve council panel of about eight hundred ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and five dollars and seven cents. All those in favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote to aye. And now the ayes have it, so move. We want the consent agenda. Consent agenda has two items tonight. Item A is a partial facility use permit for the Bisbee Rotary Club for their annual, including wine tasting on our COVID fifth, and the second one is the liquor license for the same event. Um, that seems not. Really like, discuss anything on that? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda against A and B. Second.
Yeah, motion second to approve the consent agenda as shown. All of the favors signify by saying aye. Vote to aye. And now the ayes have it, so move. All right, we'll handle all business. Bear with me on this one. What we have is nine items. And so, what I'm gonna ask for, this is, it's what's called voting in block. This is without objection. So, let me specify by you all that if, and if you have an objection and don't wanna vote, uh, the nine items in block, I'll give you a chance, but I'm gonna make a motion to, to approve these in a one block vote, a recorded vote, and then I'll open it up for discussions, and if anybody has an objection, please let me know. So, I make a motion to approve items three through item eleven on the old business agenda. Item as shown on our agenda, this will be approval of the ordinance of O-DAS twenty-four, oh four, oh five, oh six, oh seven, oh eight, oh nine, oh ten, oh eleven, or not, oh eleven, ten, eleven, and twelve. So, there are nine approvals of ordinances that we went over last week. Instead of doing them individually, we'll do them like a block. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion to second. I'll open this up now for full discussion. Anybody have questions on any of these or objection to voting in block? Thank you all. So with that, I'm gonna call for a recorded vote, and you don't have to say anything.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll see. Recorded vote on all nine items.
Okay, Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Suiet.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Thank you.
Can I say something though?
Oh, sure.
Um, I would like to thank the mayor for making the posts be more easily accessible on our website. Um, I appreciate it, and I'm sure there's quite a few as well in the public. Now, it's not, where's Waldo? It's now, my chief here, um, he has a link and she's there. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Transparency is important. Thank you for that, Councilmember. All right, um, I do apologize to people that's gotta make the, uh, yeah, the, you clerks are gonna have to figure out what I just did. So, all right, moving on to new business. Uh, this is item twelve. This is a discussion of possible approval to establish two dollars and nine point eight cents as a price per foot for the sale and transfer of certain city property being a portion of twenty-one A ten B Avenue. Can you man up there?
I, uh, I'm seeing too that we established two point zero nine eight as a price. Uh, two dollars, zero nine, having the price per, per square foot for two thousand one, uh, one hundred and forty-four square feet. Uh, transfer of certain surplus city property, uh, at twenty-one A ten B Avenue. Uh, then asphalt classing, then we approved ordinance zero twenty-four, or oh twenty-four, zero three, authorizing the sale and transfers of certain surplus city properties that's important in the city, own property, actually, one, maybe, then the other.
Okay, this, we've been in the work for about a year and a half, if I remember right. We kind of put a hold on all transfers for some time until, uh, until we, we did the rules and regulations, and this person has actually completed all the rules, as you can see in our agenda. Uh, questions?
Uh, just a point of information, just your shoulder that's here, if you have any questions for this. The advocate.
Questions, comments from the council? Okay, this, yeah, this is set up as a, we had a, somebody come in and price it out for it. It's made all of our new, new rules and regulations. So, hoping this, uh, kind of our first, uh, delve me into the new system. Do I have a motion? Ready?
I move that we establish two dollars point zero nine eight cents as a price per square foot for the sale and transfer of certain surplus city property being a portion of city-owned property located in twenty-one A ten B Avenue. I'm gonna make, do the other part.
Yep.
I move that we approve ordinance zero dash twenty-four dash zero three, authorizing the sale and transfer of certain su, surplus city property being a portion of the city-owned property located in twenty-one A ten B Avenue. APN one oh three dash sixty-three dash zero two six.
Second.
We have a motion to second to establish prices per square foot of two point oh nine eight and an approved ordinance O dash twenty-four oh three. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Suiet.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, as is so. Thank you. Thank you for everything. Thank you. That's how government works.
Thank you.
All right. Um, all right, uh, moving forward, we have item thirteen. This is a big one that comes around every few years. Not often enough, but Keith Dennis, I'd like you to come on up and give us your background about what we're doing here, and I've been through this before, but this, the main, this is kind of what, the minds will get to all the public hearing, and then we're opening it up for a public hearing there in a minute, and we'll all chirp in what we would like to see done with, uh, this five hundred fifty thousand. So, go ahead, Keith.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Keith Dennis. I'm the executive director, Southeastern Arizona Governance Organization. We are the rural council of governance for the region, including San Cruz, Cochise, Grand and Greenlee Counties.
I don't know why that did that. It has to be attached to your slide.
I would mute it. I forgot. That's, that's an artifact from previous.
Okay. Well.
While I was gone. Off the races.
Okay.
Hi.
Yeah.
Uh, well, does, uh, community economic development, uh, the transportation and transit, and probably we're best known for, um, our area agency on aging that cares for the elderly throughout the four county region. I'm here tonight uh, almost four years to the day since the last time I was at a Bisbee City Council meeting, because it is CDVG time. And, uh, so let's get started. We have, uh, I'll just.
Sorry, I didn't mute it. I did not. Uh, it's going to make all kinds of noise.
Little noises in there, so, you know.
Getting the full, uh. Okay.
Uh, I'm gonna tell, talk a little bit about what CDVG is. I'm gonna talk a little bit about, um, past projects for, uh, the city of Bisbee that have been done with CDVG. We're gonna talk about two different kinds of CDVG. The regional account and the colonial set-aside CDVG, and I'll explain the difference and, uh, and all that in a moment, and then finally, we'll open it up to the public, uh, staff and members of mayor and council for any ideas that they might have um, for what can be done with these funds this year. Quick background, what is CDVG? Oh, my goodness. Uh, it is, uh, go back to nineteen seventy-four. There's Gerald Ford signing into the laws of Housing and Urban Development Act, and that's what's called Community Development Block Grants for the entirety of the United States and some of the separate, uh, and everything in between. Yeah, it's funded by HUD. Um, and against the state level, drumroll, by, uh, Arizona Department of Housing. That's who administers, kind of like the HUD field office for Arizona's balance system.
Sorry.
My goodness.
I am so sorry.
I, I apologize. I didn't, I didn't, you know, um. Anyway, so we're gonna move on to the next slide. What's the purpose? The purpose of CDVG broadly is to benefit low to moderate income households, persons. Uh, there are three national objectives. And, uh, and no mute, no mute button. So, uh, there's three national objectives I'll talk about in a moment. What you have to use to.
I'm sorry. It's just, you know, coming as it goes. Yeah.
It's comic relief built into the, uh, the PowerPoint. Um, yeah, so that's a, a, just a very quick primer on what CDVG is and what you've gotta use it for. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on to the next slide, and we'll hear what's in. Right, two national objectives. There's.
I'm trying to get it.
Project has to meet one of these three national, either benefit low to moderate income persons or households, eliminate or prevent slum and blight conditions, which can be done by a statutory process through the mayor and council, or meet other urgent needs related to health and safety habits, like immediate pressing needs. Um,
Sorry.
Stay on low to moderate income for a moment, because there are several classes of, of people that count as low to moderate income for the purposes of CDVG. Homeless people, victims of domestic violence, um, migrant farm workers, um, senior citizens. Um, persons with mobility issues, disability, physical, you know, uh, different kinds of disabilities. Uh, there, there's targeted groups that they call it limited clientele that they count as low to moderate income. So, if you're gonna do improvements to a senior center, it doesn't matter what their income is. Uh, they're considered low to moderate income for CDVG purposes. Let's hear the next slide.
Okay. That one didn't have a sound.
All right, this is new. Uh, good. Um, so low to moderate income means eighty percent or less of the median income. The housing and urban development is kind of late, uh, getting the newest numbers. These are from twenty twenty-one, and they're still the ones that they're using. So, the pandemic, um, is not done with us, and you can see it says fifty thousand two hundred and fifty for a family of four. That's considered moderate income. Sixty percent would be thirty-seven, six eighty. That's considered low income, and so it's gotta be eighty percent or less of that median income to be considered low to moderate income. Bisbee as a whole is considered to be forty-nine point six percent low to moderate income, and that's important, because if you wanted to do something that's going to have a benefit to the entire town like a new fire truck, like repairs to the swimming pool, the whole town has to be considered fifty-one or more percent low to moderate income. So, some of those area-wide benefits are precluded from Bisbee in this round with a caveat that if the city wanted to say, we don't believe the census, we don't believe those numbers, I bet if we sent out with our utility bills or whatever, and did an income survey of the whole town, Wachikah City did this a few years ago. They said, we don't believe that. They did an income survey, and then for the next five years, those numbers, not the census bureaus, are the ones that get used for CDVG calculations. That is an option for the city to do. As it stands, forty-nine point six. So, um, you can have targeted area benefits for like a specific neighborhood. We'll talk about ten town in a moment um, where it'll go off the census block group, if it, you know, benefits a whole area. Or in the case of the Saginaw owner occupied housing rehab project that we have underway, um, then it goes house by house. Each, each, um, household has to qualify be fifty-one percent or be eighty percent or less of the area median income. Let's hear the next slide. There it is. Yeah. Click them off.
I'm trying.
Bisbee is expected, we have, we have a, a Methodist distribution, our CDO's executive board, your mayor Ken Budge is on it, the administrative council, Mr. Pocken's on it. Um, they set the rotation for, the, the region gets about one and a quarter million dollars in CDVG every year, and it generally goes, you know, um, county by county, depending on how many communities there are. So, you got Cochise, Bisbee, Benson, Tombstone, Wilcox, Wachikah City. Those are the non-entitlement communities, so there's a six-year rotation. So, um, that was changed in twenty eighteen, and then it actually came to Bisbee's benefit pretty quickly thereafter. I'll talk about that in a moment. The next time Bisbee's gonna get its regional account, its GIMME, if you will, is going to be twenty thirty. However, we're gonna go to the next slide. There's also the colonial set-aside CDVG round. This is a competitive round of funding for CDVG only for communities within a hundred and fifty miles of the U.S.-Mexico border. They set aside, uh, after the B test of housing and urban development, ten percent of the funds that they get from, uh, HUD every year for CDBG, and that is called the colonial set-aside. They set aside about nine hundred something thousand and then in two years it becomes one point nine million and they open it up for competitive round. You have to be a colonial by ADOH's definition in order to compete for this. This is not even accurate anymore for reasons that are really cool that I'm gonna talk about in a moment. But you can see there are lots of colonias. Of course, there are in places like Tucson. It refers to an old neighborhood that, uh, was built in the territorial days. So maybe it has infrastructure specifically water, wastewater, stormwater and housing infrastructure that is in need of repair. So of course, areas in Tucson were built during that time. But they're part of their entitlement. They give their CDBG money directly from HUD. So basically, if you look at this, it's almost all in the CGO region and then Yuma. And what that means is, um, our region has a competitive advantage when reaching for these funds. The state special project is another competitive round and the margins on that competition is extremely tight. In fact, the colonial set-aside, the last three rounds, um, ADOH has had more money left over than they had applications, which has resulted in communities saying, well, you put up fifteen percent match to try to get more points, you can keep your matching funds, they say. And, um, it's, it's a very, uh, it's a very special thing that our region has that the rest of the state, the rest of the country, except for Texas and New Mexico and California don't have access to. And we've made good use of it. You can go ahead to the next slide. And we, and actually Bisbee's made some pretty good use of it. So I've talked about a lot of this already. Sixty-eight colonias statewide, thirty-seven in the CGO region and Cochise County. And in Bisbee, that includes Bakerville, Tin Town, and as of a couple of years ago, Saginaw and Zacatecas. Really quick start the clock way back in twenty twenty, the last time I was here. Under the previous leadership of the city, uh, they enlisted CGO's help in getting the Saginaw neighborhood and the Zacatecas Canyon neighborhood designated as colonies. And it took a lot of work. We had to verify that it did indeed have those kind of in- infrastructure issues going back to the old days. And so the list of eligible colonias to compete actually increased by three. Zacatecas, uh, Saginaw and Wilcox. The Wilcox towns, we helped with that too. Pretty cool. We got it right in time to compete for the colonial set-aside in twenty twenty-two and got some money to fix houses in Saginaw. We asked for enough money to do five houses. As I said, they had more money left over and they said, why don't you do thirteen? It's great. Moving on. So to, so this public hearing we're doing is actually for the regional account and for colonial set-aside. In order to save time and advertising costs, we're able to combine them as one process. So we're here to talk about regional account and colonias because they're going to announce that funding round later this year. I'm anticipating July, but we never know. ADOH is still, uh, like a lot of government agencies, still a little bit off balance because of the pandemic, honestly. Um, the, the normal schedule's kind of gotten messed up a little bit. But, so let's drill down for colonias for a moment. Unlike regional account, you can take your regional account funds and say, well, we don't have engineering work for what we want to do in this neighborhood. So we're gonna procure an engineer, have them do the design work and whatever's left, we're gonna have them implement the grant with those funds. With colonias, it has to be shovel-ready. The, that is defined by ADOH as the design plans are a hundred percent done. You've got your permits in place. Let's say it's a water line or wastewater replacement. You gotta have your permits made EQ. You gotta have a bidder's list of potential contractors. You gotta have your environmental review complete. That's something CGO helps with and we'll do it upfront for free for competitive rounds to incentivize our communities to reach for these funds. And so far, it's working. And of course, match and leverage is recommended for a higher score. However, as I just said, don't always even need it. So let's go to the next slide. This is pretty neat. I just wanted to show you guys this. So I was talking about that method of distribution. Uh, it changed from a three-year to a six-year rotation. And the previous mayor and, and the other members of our, uh, executive board, when they were making this change, they, they went from a three-year to a six-year rotation. And the way it worked out was Bisbee got a second bite at the apple right as they were wrapping up phase one of Tin Town, which is the detention basin up there. And they rolled right into, uh, a second round. Now, they had engineering services from Suder Miller for all of this. The whole thing was designed. But there's only so much money in each round of CDBG. So there are only the, the green lines was what they were able to get done with the phase two. And then the last time I was this, in this room, talking to the council, we went and you guys went and, and got, um, colonial set-aside funds to finish the engineering work for Tin Town. Now, the environmental was already done. The engineering was already done, like I was saying, right? And so because of that, we got to just complete. There's no, except for one little street, one block, everything got done. It was, it was something I'm really proud of and I know a lot of people feel a lot better about it because that neighborhood used to really flood. So that's a, an example of how you can use regional account and colonial set-aside account together or in tandem to finish a project. Pretty cool. Let's move on. Let's, well, thank you. So supposed to say next steps up there, but then that means we don't have to hear it. So this is one of two public hearings that are required for the CDBG. Uh, this one, we're gonna throw everything against the wall and see what sticks. Dream big, whatever you got. Um, we're gonna winnow down the, uh, what kind of projects will work within the budget that you have for both types. Uh, wh- what kind of projects meet the CDBG national objectives and other kind of program requirements. We make something feasible and compliant with the rules. And that's gonna happen before you have your second hearing. At your second hearing, that is ideally where the mayor and council are going to make a decision, pass a resolution to apply for the funds and for what purpose. And after that, we're going to get to work putting your applications or one, depending on if you select the colonias. Um, and those are gonna be due to CGO so we can polish them up and look really nice by July first with a final due date to the Department of Housing by August first. And then after that, we're gonna run the grant for you if you'll have us. And we've done it pretty good so far. And, uh, could you, get you done, get it wrapped up, get it implemented. Almost done.
Oh.
There it is.
Later. There we go.
Next steps. Get it? Okay. So I already mentioned all this. Yes, sir. Everything is going to qualify. There may be something that somebody from the community or one of yourselves has an idea for that may not qualify for CDBG, but it'll be important to hear it because it's always good to let citizens, uh, and stakeholders just kind of say, well, if I had a genie in a bottle, I would do this. Um, and then maybe there's some other funding source or other resources that can be used to make those things happen, even if it's not CDBG. And finally, as I said, these, this, this two public hearings will satisfy the public participation requirements for both types of CDBG. I think we're almost done. It might be the last one. Yep. So with that, if there's any questions for me, I'd be happy to take them.
So before I open it up for public hearing, I just have a, I do have a couple. What we have is agenda before us was for the five hundred fifty thousand, not the one point nine ever. And so I'll be honest, I'm a little, do I have to hold two separate public hearings or do I have one that we can hear both at the same time?
The notice, which is the more important thing for HUD purposes.
Right.
It's in the paper and it talks about.
Both.
We're gonna get this much for regional account and the city in Bisbee may also seek up to one point nine million in colonial set-aside funds. It checks both boxes.
So we can do one hearing and just put our wishes out there. And you figure out which box that would fit in best.
We will definitely work with staff to do that.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
So can you, oh, I'm gonna tick it though. This map. What, what do the houses and the bells stand for? It looks like a Liberty Bell.
Oh, I, I made that as kind of a, a visual eight years ago and I took a screenshot of it. Those are, um, it's no longer accurate, but that's, those were awarded colonias.
Oh.
The red, uh, the red, uh, diamonds represent colonias. And as of twenty nineteen, those other things represent awarded colonias projects. So it's housing, housing, housing. You can see in Yuma, they use their colonial set-aside every other year and they just throw five hundred grand into their housing rehab program. And, uh, they're doing really well with that. I would love to be like them one day for our region. Um, Mr. Estes, you know about this. Um, the other ones, the bells, I guess that's supposed to represent infrastructure. So you've got improvements in Nogales. There's something, I don't know what it is, in the Tucson area. Uh, wastewater treatment plant up in Artesia, et cetera.
Okay.
There should be several other little dots on that map for colonias that we've secured for our communities since then, but this just gives you the idea.
Okay.
I couldn't find anything that has the new colonias on it anyway, so I said, we'll just use the old one.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
So anything else directly to Keith is now opening up for public hearing?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, anybody that wants to speak in the public hearing, it's really important for HUD purposes that they sign in because that sign-in sheet's gonna be part of the application. Just wanna put that out there for the public before we get.
I don't have a hearing one, but I can make one up real quick.
I'm gonna open this public hearing for the CDBG set-aside for the five hundred fifteen thousand that are coming, that's coming to us this year and the possibility of applying for up to one point nine on the colonias. So I'll, uh, I have a little list of nine here. I actually gave, um, well, I'll just go down my list really quickly. And Keith should have a copy of that. I, yeah. Of my nine.
Yes, sir.
So Bertha was a twelve-passenger van for the visually, Bisbee homeless shelter. Um, about seventy thousand. We don't need prices tonight, but we need to know whether they would, this would be following into which area. So I guess I'll have to sign that too. And, um, number two would be, uh, some senior, some upgrades of the senior sen- a senior service, senior center. All right. Um, we'd like to upgrade the, the HVAC and maybe some better things in the kitchen. That could be another use of funds. Uh, then we can always use some for the expansion of the homeowners improvement program. Uh, that's we're doing in Saginaw right now. Uh, that would probably be coming out of one point nine because it is a colonias. Uh, looking for upgrades for sewer and water lines. I think what I was thinking there would be up the gulch, up Zacatecas Canyon, to try to put some sewer lines in up there. We don't do water lines, but you know. But unfortunately, we don't have that designed yet, so that that would have to be a design to get the one to, out of the one point nine. Okay. Um, I was also thinking, we're going after a wastewater upgrade on our wastewater plant with a one point five million dollar grant from Nat Bank. If there's a match to that, I wondered if we could use some of that one of these for some of the batch for the Nat Ba- Nat Bank, um, batch. First, I also threw in there a fire truck. What I'm trying to say is it would be housed in the station across from Tin Town and would be used in the commercial districts, including Safeway, Ace, Dollar Stores and so on. It is not a simple old Bisbee item by any means. It, it might work its way up there, but neededly, but, but, but really, it could be a commercial district also for the, for the larger stores or, or down in the San Jose District. You know, I'm spinning it like I can. Then, uh, we also are looking at trying to, uh, move forward on our low-income housing project, Mid Ole Trust, which would include upgrading the windows in there. So see if that might be something that could be brought into it. And then our library needs some help. Our library, the water pours out of those downsout, or they don't have downsouts on the back of the library. It's, it's ruining the, you know, the masonry there. That masonry needs to be repointed in the downsout. See, there needs to be downsouts installed so that keeps the water off the wall of the library. Um, then, uh, the last would be a designing construction for the Cochise Road Drain, Drainage and Roadways project that we'd like to do. So those are my nine and I'm gonna open it up for anybody from the audience who'd like to come up and make suggestions.
I would. That's on your list. There's one.
Oh, Mayor, before you do that, I, I just wanna thank you for, uh, for reading that because one thing I forgot to mention that is important is, uh, whatever is selected as your CDBG project has to be in the meeting minutes for this hearing. If you come up with another idea later, you might have to start over. But, uh, so it's really important, as I said, throw it against the wall, see what sticks. It's better to have more than, than less. So, thank you.
All right. Robin.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, Council. Um, I had recently read about a town in Colorado that was battling Airbnb's and affordable housing. And they are using a plan where they are using some money to purchase homes um, and actually deed them into affordable housing. So I was hoping that maybe with some funds, there might be a way to start off such a program where we can ease out some of the Airbnbs and take the homes back for affordable housing.
Okay. Wow. Um, we're doing it with our workforce housing right now.
Yeah, it would, so to add money to that or to, um, another type of housing project. But that would, so, good. That would, what I would like to see is more money into affordable housing.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else from the public? Anything?
Well, I'll get up here. I wasn't quite ready to talk about this at the meeting. But, um, I am also, um, trying to work on.
Can you hear your name, please?
Kathleen, you can.
Thank you.
I'm trying to, uh, develop a affordable housing tiny home subdivision over on Knuckle Highway in Collins um, in front of the senior housing that's already there. So, and I wanted to, um, designate at least twenty percent of the tiny homes for the Housing Authority for affordable housing. So that's what we're working on. We're going to see an attorney tomorrow for, um, putting a, a nonprofit status into motion so we can also benefit from some of the grants and stuff like that for that. But we're, we've got a site plan that we've been talking with the city about and we've got about seventy-one, um, tiny home lots that are on a site plan that the planning center in Tucson has drawn up where it's in the regional commercial, um, space along Knuckle Highway.
So one of the things we'll need down the road is what amount you're looking for. That's for both of these. Because we had this one pot and lot of pick and choose, the council lot, they can choose which ones and what we can give to each one. So if you kind of come up with a number would help also. So please sign your name on this.
Here's a pen.
Anyone else? Any more showing out ideas for? How about council? Well, guys.
I, I think you've pretty much covered them.
No, I didn't. I mean, yeah.
Well, if there was any way we could get, uh, money for a forest oppression.
Yeah.
That, that's a big one.
Yeah. That would have benefited one area of town, unfortunately, in which it's not part of the, I'm afraid, that probably wouldn't work. But.
It's just gonna be in that.
First wrong in that.
Right. Yeah. Well, he'd have to consider it.
Yeah. I mean, uh, let's make sure it's on the list.
Yeah.
There, there is one thing too, that I, I don't think we mentioned quite early and that is, um, some of these things could be funded, some of them could be partially funded. You know, it, it might be that it's a, um, say three hundred thousand dollar project, but when everything gets tunnel dry and we fold everything up, maybe we can, you know, give fifty thousand dollars to a three hundred thousand dollar project. Gets tunnel dry and we fold everything up, maybe we can, you know, give fifty thousand dollars to a three hundred thousand dollar project. It may help it get off a square one or qualify for financing and that sort of thing, so. Um, so, you know, if you ask for a hundred, we may give you a hundred, but we may give you fifty.
Yeah, if it's a road project, we could take money out of the streets and infrastructure abundant and supplement it. Um, anybody else have any in their districts that they think, um, would, uh. Be well called by.
Would, um, this, um, drainage ditches in, in Warren area, like Blackwell in particular. The infrastructure seems to be falling down somewhat, you know, the big walls, trees, all of those things that they call.
Sure.
Um, especially that main wash on, on Blackwell, I know there's been some issues, there's been some things you're overdoing that. Um, that would be something I think that could be like that. And even some of the other, um. I don't want to call them wash, they're all copper ditches, you know, that run through town. Uh, but again, a lot of those are. The original, I mean, all the infrastructure, but the original stabilization walls and stuff are starting to bring out, so. Um, the one that's running. It, um, di- uh, comes across, um, school, uh, school territory on the common school territory. When you go through four points, usually five points, and you go, um, it's like you're going to the high school and. Those old Roman tracks, there is a, there's a ditch there. That's, you really look at it, it looks like it's starting to collapse. Um, especially underneath the river and such. That's why I was wondering if that type of.
Yeah, I don't know, now the Cochise, that part of Cochise.
Yeah, I don't know, but that, I'm just thinking of that one section because it's, um. Increased care will be off after the move though.
Okay.
Mister, since we already have one member of C O staff who lives in Bisbee that's giving, uh, input, I'm gonna put my Bisbee hat on. And as a citizen, if I may, I'm not advocating, I just, like, since we're just putting things in the minutes. There was an idea before, which would be, uh, that, that came up in previous years, and those like this declare. The Saginaw neighborhood to be a slum and blight. Uh, my contacts at A D O H say that, uh, abating homes that aren't gonna come back. That are too dilapidated to be repaired is a matter of the property owners signing it over. Not like a, a lean or anything like that. It's very simple. And then regional account funds, not colonists, could be used to scrape that stuff off, get rid of it, and now you've got buildable lots. With utilities, addresses, streets. And, uh, it can take some pressure off the housing situation and also. Uh, get rid of some of the fire hazards and pests and things like that, that, uh, are not so great for that neighborhood.
Who would, who would own that property?
Well, the property owner would still own.
Would still own the property, yeah.
They can just give the city permission to.
Clean it up.
To clean those properties up.
So, but that can be out of, out of the colonial system.
We can do housing rehab, but not housing, uh, you know, it's great.
I had another question.
Yes, ma'am.
For the San Jose area, I mean, it's an old neighborhood, but we're the newest neighborhood in Bisbee. Do we have to be designated a colonist to apply for some of these things?
For the colonial set aside, yes. For the regional account, if the neighborhood is low to moderate income. Or it's a more targeted thing, you can do an income survey of a particular area within the San Jose area, and then you can qualify it that way.
So that's, that's the five fifteen, go ahead.
Okay, I was just gonna say, what about working on E B E compliance around town?
A D A is, uh, one thing that you can do with C B G where you can actually work on government buildings. They don't let you u- use C B G for government buildings, except for like emergency services, right, with fire stations. But you can always make buildings more accessible, including government buildings, including ramps on sidewalks. Um, that's called removal of architectural barriers, and it's to benefit folks with mobility issues, which as I said, count as low to moderate income to C B G purposes.
Okay, put that one down.
I got it.
No, no.
Uh, Ms. Vera, Jim, what, what is, uh, Ms. Clyde had a specific project in mind? When you asked that question.
Well, not a specific project, but we could find many projects.
Yeah, well, kinda want to get something on the minutes here. We'll give you a few minutes. We'll give you time.
Not over yet.
As you're thinking about it, uh, kind of segue from, you know, your, your idea of, uh, A D A. Uh, one of the things that is not complete in some of our, uh, well, a lot of our neighborhoods, but. Some of our, um, like Saginaw, uh, Tenth Town, and Bakerville is sidewalks. Uh, so that's another item that we could use a sponsor for, put in sidewalks, really.
So do you have to do a designated neighborhood? Because I know Cochise Row is, I mean, there's. People with children there, you know, there's, you know, you have to walk on roads, so that would be one of the areas.
If it's designated, I'm not sure, Cochise Row is, they just, they said it's made at this time.
So in the, in the colonialous areas, Bakerville, so on, we could use. One point nine, and then the other ones we could use the five fifteen.
So is, uh, the question time, is Cochise Row connected with that side? Cause I thought it wasn't one side of that. No, it's not.
I don't believe it's part of the Bakerville colonies.
Okay, because.
We can check the map, but I'm pretty sure it's not.
Okay. I thought we did use, yeah, to give us one year, years ago.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, that's why I'm thinking it was.
I, I don't believe that was done with colonialous funds. For colonists, you have to have the study done and engineered. Uh, just really quick on the matter of sidewalks, that's not one of those, uh. Types of critical infrastructure for sanitation and housing and things that, that would be a regional account. Um, type of, type of affair. And people, uh, communities use C B G for sidewalks all the time.
It was mentioned that has, you know, busy with the fire, the fire. That a concern was that there are buildings without higher escapes and safety access. Would that be considered? Uh, I know it's to a specific area, but it would be, you know, concerning for the profit life of this.
That's what it's, that's his job right now, is to check that out. But if you're talking old Bisbee. The weird, so that the financial part wouldn't work for C B G.
Yeah, but if there was in other parts of town where they were qualified low income, then you could.
But didn't we use C B G funds for the fire escape at the Y? Years ago.
It would have been before my time, but the difference would be.
That was way back.
I'm thinking it's before my.
The, the difference between fire escapes to the Y versus fire escapes for Main Street businesses is the Y is a residential structure with low income. It's not a commercial business. So we're talking about low to moderate income households as opposed to commercial enterprises.
Yeah, that's probably, you're right, well, we got a lot of institutional knowledge. On words.
Trucks and, um, fire suppression systems. Uh, I would like to also bring up the idea of using C B G to match for a U S D A community facilities grant. Which normally they want matching, and so you'd be able to use a little bit of money to match the grant, and then they would actually possibly be able to help. Fund fire system, fire suppression, um, fire. Houses, cameras, community facilities. So there's the idea of using C B G's money as a match to actually get the full grant for the fire suppression.
So that's not, cause many grants, you can't use federal money for a match.
C B G is one exception to that.
Okay.
And your NAD bank entry on here actually talks about using C B G as match for NAD.
That's what I was thinking, right?
So I just wanted to put that out of books also.
Well, yeah, absolutely, put it on the, on the list. Don't have it on the minutes. Anything else?
I'm gonna just, oh, some, some, uh, mentioned in the back row, um. Okay, what we're talking about, uh, potentially parks in some of these colonies, uh, there's. A lot of parks. Also, I was thinking about, um, with sidewalks, um, potentially using. Uh, traffic, um, and road safety and through stormwater infrastructure, uh, for water management. As part of that, I don't.
Yeah, I think, maybe some, a thing on water management there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's a good deal.
I'll sign it.
And we'll pass that out for everybody else that said anything, just so it's on the record. That might owe a name on. All right, with that, I'm close to public hearing, and we'll move on from there. Next, next thing will be bringing back what's eligible and we'll. Get some prices on the things, so I have an idea where, where we get forward. All right, my computer back up and rolling. I think we only have one more item. Um.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That, thank you. Uh, item fourteen, this is discussion possible. Possible to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona A dot for the rehabilitation of Moon Canyon Bridge. Public Works Director.
Wait.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So just like it says, this is, uh, to go into I G A with. A dot, uh, for the rehabilitation of the Moon Canyon Bridge. Uh, this is al- also includes the, uh, retaining walls that support this bridge. And we, as we've seen over some of the years, uh, that has shifted, so. Um, this is a hundred percent federally funded grant for one point two million dollars. Uh, and so thi- this is just, uh, an I G A, there's no money involved, uh, and there is no match. Even, so. Well, any questions?
So you're talking about the wall that run up the, the wash there on each side?
The ones that are, uh, particular that support the. Yeah, and then we'll see how far we can go.
I know there's.
Yes.
That go, that caves in the bridge doesn't hold too well later, so hopefully we can get all the way up.
There is one potential financial aspect to this, is if the final cost estimate exceeds the initial estimate. Then the local agency would be responsible for paying the difference if we look forward. I do.
We'll make sure we don't go over one point two.
I have mentioned. Yeah, that is, that is on the I G A, um, I have mentioned to the A dot. Uh, where we go that, uh, we don't have local funds that we are really happy to put to us. So, so. Give that, give that mine.
Any other questions or comments? I'll take a motion for a new bridge.
I move to approve the entrance into an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona A dot for the rehabilitation of Moon Canyon Bridge.
I'll second that.
And the motion, second, move to enter into an agreement with, uh. A dot for the rehabilitation Moon Canyon Bridge. All those bakers, by the way, saying hi. Oh, it's me. Very ninety eyes on it, so move.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere.
Yep.
Alex, uh, City Manager report. We're hoping, I'm hoping to get one more.
I've got one item tonight, and, uh, Matt's gonna give you a cool update. We need this, um. So cool update, uh, start with electrical. Uh, we've been meeting now weekly with A P S. Uh, to get and, uh, our electrician, uh, for the job, uh, to move things forward, uh, for our timeline. And everything is moving, um, forward, uh, in a good way. Um. Electrician has now put up the panels on the exterior of the building. Uh, we're worried about the grounding rod. I found out today that is, was put in. Um, and we're looking, uh, for the building inspector to do, uh. A gray tags on Monday, like the following Monday. Um, and then A P S will be coming, hopefully coming out Tuesdays to supply the line to that. Cause they're gonna be putting in a loophole, um, and some other stuff out. Yeah, and some different transformers and whatnot, but they're going over there. So that's coming along well. Um, with plastic pools coming in, they ca- they started on Monday. Uh, and pour out all the plumbing and all the filters that were in the pump room. Um, they did it really fast. But it's always easier to take out than putting it back in. Um, and so that's, that's looking good as well. One picked up the pad recently, um, as we were, uh. Putting water in the pool for, uh, after we had cleaned the pool, we were putting water back in, we were noticing that. Um, we would fill it up and stop it in the evening, and then in the morning, it would stop it. So, um, and we did it a couple nights to see what was going, if there was. Just evaporation or whatever. Uh, so we ended up calling, uh. Jim Weller from Plastic Pools out and, or called him and said, hey, this is what's going on. He said, you need to get American, uh, leak detection out there again, and have them check that. Uh, we just had them come out last Friday. And there are, uh, we already knew about one main crack across, which even Johnny knows about the main, one main crack across the lot. He noted a lot of other cracks, uh, that have been painted over, over the years. Um, so I talked with Jim, he came down today and, and looked at the area. And besides the one big one, the crack that we know, we've known about, um. And so the other ones, we can, to get us, uh, you know, a few years, he said we can, um. Do a, a, a one inch B on each side of it and route it out and put epoxy in there. The one main crack that we have, he said, we'll go one foot on each side of it. Cut down and put re-support with, uh, rebar and five thousand P S I, uh, concrete in there. And then we will re, and then staff will repaint the pool. Um, he did say it's possible, you know, that, you know, that should give us a good amount of years. Uh, and possibly in five to ten years, we might have to, uh, resurface the bottom, add a layer onto the bottom. Uh, of the pool because of these multiple crackings. So, um. That's, I know he spoke with you as well.
I agree on that.
He, that, he told me, he said, um, since we didn't know this was coming up. He said he's gonna be pulling two of his crews out, uh, from Tucson and Phoenix to come down here. Uh, he said he still thinks we'll be close to that timeline, um, of April first. Uh, this will be very close, but he said that he will be pulling his crews out, so it affects his whole schedule. Uh, for the summer, but he's been killing this to get them. I will have a quote, uh, Friday. Uh, for that.
And you, and they're gonna start also putting the equipment back in.
Yes, yeah, oh, yes. Yeah, all equipment's in, um, and there's a couple pieces that are missing, but they're, they're ordering that. And they're then making, yes.
Yeah, um, the epoxy years ago, um, ninety-three, uh, when I was doing the Alice, uh, we had a. Situation with crap, and they came in and they put a dam compound, not a dam compound, but. And that was at the time was the stuff that they use on our dams around Arizona because of the flexibility. And they, I was just curious if that was what the kind of situation, so as you're cleaning it. Kind of sinks because of the weight of the water and then it contracts and, and does that.
Yes.
Curious if that type of epoxy you're talking about.
Yes, yes, he said that it'll be able to, you know, withstand the movement. Um, he did say, once we paint it, when we fill it, he said, if we, if we, once we paint it, he said. If there's any, any more cracking, we'll be able to see it. Um, and we can, he said, we can take our divers and, and do epoxy, uh, one, one's a pool is full.
That same was with this, they could put it when it was wet, and there was water in the pool, they just ejected, which is, and it worked briefs. Uh, which is stuff are out there.
Uh, these guys are, are phenomenal. They know the, these pools, those are the hall they do. Is old pools. They don't do anything with building new pools, and so he was, as, as probably figured out at home. He can talk about pool all day long.
But Kenny Swift.
He didn't mention being one of the divers.
No.
Yeah, he told me everything else, though.
Uh, anything else, uh?
We just.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm just, we're just trying to be, you know, tell you everything that's going on, uh, and not pulling anything behind. Trying to be up.
Take one step forward and one step back and one step. Take one step forward and one step back and one step forward, that's the only way we do it.
Well, uh, just to, to follow up briefly on what Matt just reported, um. We, we've already passed the two hundred thousand dollar mark, okay, just to keep everybody up to speed with what this is costing. Um, we don't know yet what this is gonna cost, we're gonna know by the end of the week, um, and, uh. We knew most of what we needed to do when we decided to close the pool last year, uh, this was not one of those things, um, so. Uh, but in the process of fixing things, sometimes you find other weaknesses in the system, and, and we did. Um, and, and, and now those are being fixed too, uh, you know, we didn't anticipate replacing the filtration system, and now we are. Um, and, and that's a, that's a positive development, in my opinion, and, uh, at the same time, uh, you know. Dealing with the cracks in the pool probably, um, will extend its life another four or five years, more than what we anticipated. So, um, you know, while, uh, you know, Matt stood here a year ago and told you all. That we had to close the pool because it needed fixed, I think you can tell now from everything that we've already done. And what we're about to do, that it just took us time and had to be, and so, um, when we, when we, when we fill it up and. Uh, start, start the system and start to see people coming back, uh, Memorial Day weekend, uh, it will be cause for celebration.
We won't say me as field, but. But that's just my two cents.
And, well, real quick, yeah, I just appreciate the support of the council, uh, and Miss Parkin, uh, we are. Um, really looking forward to bringing this back open, and I know I get, I get asked everywhere I go, uh, about the pool. And, uh, and everybody asks, is it really gonna, we're operating Memorial Day weekend, that's what we're doing.
So, we're thinking of a way to celebrate, yeah, yeah.
With these. Repairing these cracks, uh, we, I hope to also see a, uh, uh, increased savings in our water bill. Uh, that is one thing that, uh, Josh, my parks supervisor said, he said, we would almost. Fill the, not fill, but we'll add a little bit of water to the pool every day, he said. It, it was also, you know, from splashing and evaporation, but now we know it's also this.
Average mix the nine inches.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, we were estimating water loss somewhere between eleven to fifteen thousand gallons a day. It's a lot of water, yeah. It's all we got, sir.
All right, all right.
That's all we have.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'm voting the same, adjourn all the favor.